Welcome, everyone, to the New York State Community Commission on Reparations Public Hearing for the 26th of June. I'm going to share my screen, I hope. Great. So, good morning. I am Dr. McKinnney-Chisholm Straker. I'm serving as the current Executive Director for the New York State Community Commission on Reparations Remedies. Thank you all for joining today. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge that I am introducing this public hearing from the ancestral homelands of the Lenape Delaware people who were moved from these lands and forced to what is presently called Oklahoma. We honor the Lenape Delawares' enduring connection to this land and recognize the ongoing struggles of all Indigenous nations for sovereignty and justice. The story of Black New Yorkers begins with the story of Native nations here first and still. Today's hearing aims to gather valuable insights and testimonies on matters related to the New York State Community Commission on Reparations Remedies, especially on the theme of slavery from Wall Street to Harlem. A reminder that this hearing itself is a part of the reparations work. Truth-seeking and truth-telling is a part of satisfaction, which is one of the five forms of reparations under the United Nations legal framework. We do this work to honor and call out the suffering and pain of enslaved Black New Yorkers and the structural trauma that Black New Yorkers faced and continue to face after legal enslavement here. The agenda includes a presentation from content experts, time for question and answers, and then testimony from members of the New York State public. We appreciate everyone's commitment to maintaining a respectful environment that fosters constructive dialogue. For those who wish to speak during the public testimony portions, if you did not indicate your intention to give testimony when you registered for this event, please privately message our interim operations manager, Ms. Erica Rowe Owen, now. Briefly, I will share a bit about this commission. This presentation is simply to remind everyone of the commission's purpose, goals, and describe the work that we've undertaken so far. To begin, I'll offer some historical context on enslavement in New York. Contrary to what some assume, slavery was deeply entrenched in New York's history. In 1626, the Dutch first brought enslaved Africans to this Lenape Delaware territory called Manhattan. The Dutch called it New Amsterdam. Today, many people call this place Manhattan. By the early 18th century, New York State had become the largest enslaving colony in the North, with 40% of white households enslaving Black relatives. In 1711, a slave market was established at the foot of Wall Street, at what is now the intersection of Wall and Water Streets. This market remained active for decades, playing a central role in the New York City's economy. Enslavement wasn't just a Southern institution, it was foundational to New York State's development. This is an excerpt from the 1800th Census in New York State illustrating the pervasiveness of slavery in this northern state. In 1799, New York passed a bill for gradual abolition. Abolition wasn't fully implemented in New York until 1827. This consensus document shows how New York counted enslaved persons under the Three-Fifths Clause of the Constitution. This enhanced Southern political power, and it's one example of the North's continued complicity in the institution of slavery. This slide shows Thomas Nast's famous illustration from Harper's Weekly in 1863 depicting the promise and hope that followed the Emancipation Proclamation. The image contrasts the horrors of slavery with the aspirational visions of freedom, including payment for work, public education, and homeownership. These were dreams that many formerly enslaved people held, but as we know, the reality of post-emancipation USA falls short of these ideals. Reparations are about bringing this reality to fruition. At the federal level, HR40, which would establish a national commission to study and develop reparation protocols, sorry, proposals for African-Americans, was first introduced in 1989 by Representative John Conyers Jr. and has been reintroduced to Congress every year since without passage. California became the first state to establish a reparations task force in 2020 with their final report issued to the California Legislature on the 29th of June in 2023. At this, at this, the time that this 2024 map was created, reparations actions had been established in 11 states and 22 localities across the US. That number is growing, and New York is the second state to take up this mantle. Here in New York State, our Community Commission on Reparations Remedies was established via legislation signed by Governor Hochul on December 19th, 2023. This bill was sponsored by Assemblymember Michael Salages and Senator James Sanders Jr. This commission is tasked with examining the legacy of slavery, subsequent discrimination, and their continuing impacts, and can, and developing recommendations for appropriate remedies. To be clear, this commission does not enact reparations or provide payments as compensation or restitution. This commission will make recommendations to elected officials that New Yorkers have chosen to represent them. The elected officials of New York State will decide which reparations and recommendations to advance. Here, I'd just like to take a moment to call out the harms that the commission is legislated to examine. Folks can look up S1163A online for more. It's also on the commission's website. So, you can see here, the commission is meant to examine interstate transfer of enslaved Africans, examine de jure and de facto discrimination against enslaved Africans, their descendants, people of African descent. De jure means by law, de facto means not enforced by law. This is limited, not limited to economic, political, educational, educational and social discrimination. Additionally, the commission will examine the lingering negative effects of the institution of slavery and discrimination on Black New Yorkers, examine the current condition of Black New Yorkers, and to the extent practicable, including but not limited to the economics, political, educational, and social conditions. And the commission will recommend appropriate remedies and reparations in consideration of their findings. The commission's executive committee consists of Dr. Chanel Hawkins as Chair, Dr. Deborah Jenkins as Vice Chair, Linda Tarrant Reed as Secretary, and Jennifer Jones Austin Esquire as Treasurer. The commissioners are committed to a thorough evidence-based process that centers community voices and experiences. And the commission consists of nine commissioners overall, with a dedicated staff, including myself, presently serving as Executive Director, Erica Rowe Owen as interim operations manager, Stuart Mitchell III as parliamentarian, and Words Warriors as the communications team. Our commission is diverse in expertise and united in purpose. The commission's official website is NY, sorry, NY.gov backslash reparations, and you can submit inquiries or written testimony by email at reparationscommission@reparations.ny.gov. The commission holds both business meetings and public hearings. Business meetings focus on the internal matters and commission work, while public hearings like today's event are designed specifically to gather community input. We welcome public participation, not only through in-person testimony, but also through written submissions. So if you can't attend a meeting or hearing in person or virtually, you can submit comments to the email address on the website, on the slide here and on our website. There are many ways for New Yorkers to engage with the commission's work beyond attending hearings. You can host community forums, provide testimony, submit recommendations via email or voicemail, and engage in dialogues about reparations in your community. We are seeking input on what reparations might look like in New York State. This could include addressing inequities in housing, education, healthcare, and the criminal legal system, investments in Black-owned businesses, and potentially direct financial compensation. We welcome all suggestions for remedying the harms of slavery and subsequent structural discrimination. We are also currently accepting proposals for legal counsel and economist teams, as well as a full-time operations manager, so please apply and/or spread the word if you know qualified candidates. Please watch our website for additional positions as they become available. So, before I introduce our speaker, if you have questions during the presentation, please place them in the Q and A. You will be called on in the order in which your questions were entered into the chat. Please be aware that the Q and A is not your testimony time, that is something entirely separate. Your questions are meant to be for the presenter. Please be prepared to come off mute and have your camera on, as is required by New York State open meeting laws, if you intend to ask questions, similarly for providing public testimony. So I'm pleased to introduce today's subject matter expert, Dr. Ned Benton from John Jay College of Criminal Justice. He co-directs the Northeast Slavery Records Index with Dr. Judy Lynn Peters. The NESRI is a vital resource for documenting the history of slavery in our region. Dr. Benton directed John Jay's Master of Public Administration program in inspection and oversight, and served for more than 15 years as federal court monitor in a civil rights case, in civil rights cases about youth corrections. He is a public administration faculty, where slavery records work reflects his dedication to public history and documentation. So I will stop sharing my screen and turn it over to you, Dr. Dr. Benton, I think we need to make sure that you have, that we can hear you. Let's see. Can you try now?
Now, can you hear me? And can you see the NESRI screen? Or are you looking at my face?
We can see your face.
Okay, I'm trying to get to be able to see the screen, so I'm going to go back to screen sharing. Now can you see the, the NESRI PowerPoint?
Yes.
Great, okay. This presentation is about the Northeast Slavery Records Index, and below here, you can see two ways to get to it if you want to get to it at some point. The simple way is nessri.us. The purpose of NESRI is to provide free access to records of, to the, to the locations and information about records of slavery. We don't possess the records. What we do is to index where the records are and what they say. Then through our website, we share the documentary information. We, we, we do it for the states of Maine through Pennsylvania. And in the records, we document the identities of many enslaved people and their families. We believe that a deep understanding of slavery's many aspects is foundational to designing and implementing reparative programs. NESRI's mission aligns perfectly with the commission's duty to document the capture, procurement, transport, sale, and treatment of enslaved African-descended people across New York. We also include enslaved Indigenous people, and to communicate this individualized information to informed community-level understanding and reparative projects in counties, cities, and towns. We believe that by providing access to records that name people, we restore and document the identities of the people who were enslaved, and we think that that is foundational to this entire reparational exercise, that the first reparation ought to be, ought to reach through history back to the people who were actually enslaved and say their names whenever we can. Now, NESRI has, as of a while ago, we had, we had 8,835 records naming individuals who were enslaved in New York. We had 43,000 naming enslavers, and so forth. We had records like the Dutch records of New Amsterdam that named enslavers, named enslaved people. We have slave ship records. We have Treaty of Paris records. These are records that, where, where enslaved people who fought on the side of the Brits, who escaped and fought on the side of the Brits after the settlement of the Revolutionary War, could go to Nova Scotia. And these records document who they were, and so they're included. Census records, records of trials, this happens to be the record of the trial of the, of a fire conspiracy where people were, were burnt at the stake. Records of purchases, like this is the mayor, a future mayor of New York acquiring a, selling the, the, the ownership of a newborn baby girl. This is the mayor of New York. Runaway notices. Then birth registration and abandonment. We mentioned that there was the gradual abolition law in 1800. The gradual abolition law said that if, if, if a, if an enslaved woman gave birth to a baby, the, the baby had to be registered, that birth, so that the baby could be free in the future. And if the baby was retained, then the baby had to do 25 years of service if female, if male, if female, 28 if male, and then they would get to be free. So they basically had to do 25 to 28 more years of enslavement before they would get their freedom, but the owner could also, the enslaver could also abandon the child, which meant that the child was taken away from the mother and placed in the overseers of the poor as an orphan. And I will show you names of people for whom this happened. There are financial records. These are records from the comptroller's office of the state paying fees for the abandoned children. So these were children taken, babies taken away from their mother, and this is the comptroller reimbursing towns for the care of these people by foster care or whatever. Personal letters, this is a letter from, from Peter J. to, to James and Johnny, who is Johnny is John Jay, who is the president of, the, the founder of John Jay, about their slave who ran away and went to, and fought with the Brit, and fought alongside the Brits. The Louisiana Slave Trade Database is in our database. We discovered 32 people who were identified in the Louisiana Slave Trade Database as being born in New York. So their enslavement is completely illegal, and, and yet we have records in Louisiana of them being enslaved, and you know how it happened, they were kidnapped and sold south. So, I'm going to give you a presentation of NESRI. You can do it for any county and town or city in New York, and frankly, from Maine to Pennsylvania, but I'm choosing Ulster County because this is statewide and this is a, a, a good example. So, now I'm going to stop sharing, and I am going to start sharing again, but I'm going to go to... Can you now see the NESRI website?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so this is what you get if you go to nessri.us. And you then, if you want to see the records, you can go to Community Locality Reports. And what we're going to do is to select New York, and I'm going to select Ulster. Push the button. This is now going to a supercomputer. I mean, it's, this is doing tons of, of pivot tables and analyses to create records specifically related to Ulster County or whatever I was to specify. So these are all the records that it located. Now here, we have census records of Ulster County showing the percent of people who were enslaved in Ulster, Ulster County in various points, so 11% of the population was enslaved by the other 89% in 1790. Now, if you go here, you see the enslaved persons. These documents are more individualized, so these are, are the census records at the household level, and I can click here on the number, and now you will see all of the names of the people in, in New Marlboro who were enslavers, and how many people they reported in the census. So we're, we're naming the names of the enslavers in this process. Now here, we have names of enslaved people in, in Ulster County, and they're, they're, they're organized by family. So this person over here is the earliest person in a family group, and then everybody is listed after that underneath. And so, for example, here, you're seeing Maumau Bet. Now, who is Maumau Bet? In Ulster County, a, a, a good deal of her life, Sojourner Truth, who wrote the biography of her life as a slave in New York, was enslaved in Ulster County. And Maumau Bet was her grandmother. So we're, we're showing you the, 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 how NESRI indexed the records of Sojourner Truth going back. We, we could, we could identify the enslaver that she was speaking of, we could identify documents. You can see here, this is a record, Isabella 18334, that's Sojourner Truth's NESRI code. And so I can go here, look on the details, and you'll see when Charles Hardinburg died in 1806, nine-year-old Truth, then known as Bell, was sold at auction with a flock of sheep for $100 to John Neely near Kingston. So that's, that's the record that, that we have. And, and it's important because when we get a set of records about an enslaved person and put them together, we can see that person's life. So now, these are, now notice, we have 1,799 records identifying enslaved persons. And we're able to name their names, which so much of what we hear about is, is we hear that slavery happened in New York, and we're told in conceptual terms what happened, that they had an emancipation law, or they had this, or they had that. We believe that we need to go back to the actual records and be able to document in the actual records, particularly because there are people who would like to deny that this actually happened, and say that it's fake. It's not fake, and we can point to the historical documents that prove it. Now, the names of the enslavers, this is a table of the first 20, and we have 4,856 records for Ulster County alone. We've got it for, you know, we've, we've got 100,000 records going from Maine to Pennsylvania, but this is Ulster County alone. Now, the next is a table of advertising for fugitive enslaved people. And again, this is just in Ulster County, and it's, it's organized by, by location. So this is Jacob Hasbrook Wants the Return of Harry, and there's a warrant served, and, and then here, this next one, this is a group of New Paltz residents who form a, a, the Society of Negroes Unsettled, it's 12 men who want to be a posse, and will be, will, will work together to find the, the enslaved people who are running away and bring them back for a fee. And so, anyway, this is just more information about enslavement, and it's very local. You know, I can tell you the names of these people, I can tell you the document they signed. Now, here, records of sales. These are records of, for example, the top one there is the one I showed you about Sojourner Truth. So these are records of sales, and for, for, for Ulster County, we have 148 records of sales that name individual enslaved people. Now, the next one, if we did it, we did this a couple weeks ago for Manhattan, and we had a very large table E showing all the slave ship owners and investors. We don't have any slave ship owners and investors for Ulster County. We think they, they might have gone down and bought enslaved people at the auctions from the ships, but they didn't own or invest in ships. Next, we have a table of biographies, and that, you know, this one is, is Isabella Baumfree, Sojourner Truth's biography is, is a big one, but there are many other ones, and you can learn about them. Then we have here, names of governance officials documented as enslavers. And we think that this is a, you know, when we talk about the intensity of slavery in a community, one indicator to us is the, is the, is the number of, of, of leaders who are enslaved, and you'll notice here, here's someone, Peter Canteen was in the New York Senate in 1800. When the gradual abolition law was passed, two-thirds of the state senate owned slaves. Two-thirds of the state senators themselves owned slaves, and so that was why the emancipation law didn't emancipate anybody. It simply provided a process that was a long-term process to do that, because the senators weren't going to invoke to, to emancipate their own enslaved people. Now we have enslaved soldiers in the Revolutionary War, and I'll show you two of them. The first one, John Bean, you can see, if I go to his detail, he was a Black loyalist who emigrated to Nova Scotia. He fought on the side of the Brits. He was a, and so then, if we go down here to Cato Dedrick, he, whoops, what's going Let me get down to this again, I shouldn't be... Yeah, here he is. This, he then fought on the side of the, of the, of the colonists. Now, we have other records about the area. These are like documents of places where slavery took place. And then we have advocates, we didn't have any, if you take, if you do this report upstate, you don't have, the enslaved people you have are people who were fleeing enslavement from the South. And so we then would report the advocates that were helping them in the Underground Railroad, but the people who were fleeing enslavement in 1840 or 1850 were enslaved under federal law. They were, they were, they just weren't enslaved under, under New York's law. Then we have a system for further research, and I'm going to show you a couple things about it. First, I'm going to hit on this one here about abandoned children. These are, this is a list of children who were taken from their mothers at birth by the enslaver and sent off to, to foster care, or, and so, and so we can name Mary Rusa and Dick Oliver, and whoops, that's the last name, where's the, we can name Blandina. And some of these people, we have no name, but others we do. Yeah, here's the enslaved person, Amy Blandina, Isabel, Tom, Harry, Pete. These were children who were taken away from their mother at birth. Now I can go back to the top, and I can do... Child. These are children separated from, and look at... separated from, and look, look here, you can see this one under Diane Bavir. Uh, this is the 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 child is named Diane, D I A N. Uh, the owner was Bavir. And you can see down here that the family was broken up. So she was separated from the rest of her family to go to a different house. Now, the next one we'll we'll show, I'll show you the, um, these are ministers in Ulster County who were enslavers. And you can see their elaborate uh histories. Um, you can also see that some of them went to um, you know, Princeton or Rutgers. Um, but they were were ministers who were enslavers. And I will show you, um, anyway, I'm I'm um um, I am now going to show you one other, one other document. We're going to go back to the slavery index, whoops. And I'm going to show you something. We're going to go to colleges, and we're going to look at a report. This is a report about enslavement for at Yale. And and the the colonial, where we've studied enslavement at the colonial of colleges and universities because we think that they're very, they're a very important vector for the slavery um around the Northeast. Um, so here are our slavery records for Yale. Most of them are not uh records that Yale acknowledges. Yale tends to acknowledge slavery that occurred on campus. Um, whereas we are interested, we're interested in in um college officials who were enslavers. So here we do list the one hundred and fifty-four Yale officials who were enslavers. Then we list, um, eight hundred and four um students and alumni of Yale who became enslavers. And our point is that in terms of Yale's legacy of slavery, it's not just what they did on campus, it's what they taught the students to do after they graduated. And so these are graduates of of uh of um Yale who then went on, and let's see if this um, they went on to um do enslavement in other in other places. Then here, uh, these are the names of the people who Yale was was responsible for. Um, organized in the same way where we see them in families. And finally, what we have here, uh, the early years of the colonial universities, they were divinity schools. And what what we're looking at here is where someone goes to Yale Divinity School and then graduates and goes off to run a church. Like, here's someone, he was, he was doing it in in New York. We have, we can do this by state. Um, and goes off and leads a congregation as an enslaver. Models enslavement in search to the congregation. And we think that that was a way in which enslavement was legitimized across um, a- across the um across the Northeast. We have two hundred and eighteen um such records. So now I'm going to stop this sharing, and I'm going to go back and go to one more. Now, I just, this is a one final slide about what Nezrem and New York reparations, what we can do together. And the first is that we can expand and enhance Nezrem's record of enslavements. For example, we have the the registration and abandonment records for Manhattan. We do not have it for Brooklyn. But we know where they are, we need to digitize them and code them up so that you know about the 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 children that were separated from their mother in Brooklyn. Um, we need to uh expand our coding of family relationships. Um, we are sharing the names of enslaved people that we identify with the Ten Million Names Project, which is a national project to identify the names of the people who were enslaved and be able to say their names. The benefit, we're sharing our names, but we have much more information about them uh than just their names. We we have, uh, we we're, but we're 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 in a relationship with that project. Um, the fourth is, we think it would be useful to develop an enslavement intensity measure um so that we then can look at localities where there was more enslavement going on, a higher percentage of people being enslaved, and perhaps more public officials in enslavement roles, maybe more ministers modeling slavery. And so these would be places where perhaps more reparations um might be attached. Um, then, um, uh, we want to continue coding of enslavement by colonial area uh alumni. You know, we've we've, we're part of the way through, but we've got work to do on Columbia. We've got work to do on Union College. We've got work to do on Rutgers. Um, we want to design ways for K-12 teachers and college faculties to use Nezrem live in class so students can do document-based research on enslavement. That thing where I showed you how to search on the children or search on the ministers, that's designed for students to be able to do in to dig into the history of enslavement in their community. And finally, we want to, we, you know, this, Nezrem is a database for the reparations project. You know, it's something that if you didn't have it, you'd need to make it. And we have it, and we, it's free. We want to give it away, we want it to be used. And um, and so we're interested in how Nezrem can be made more permanent. Um, it's pretty permanent to John Jay, but we want to reinforce its availability and the ways in which it can be used across the state. So now I'm going to stop sharing and stop talking. But thank you for the chance.
Thank you so much, Dr. Benton. Um, I know I have a couple of questions, but uh we're going to open the floor for a fifteen-minute question and answer. Uh, I, we see that there are already two questions in the chat. If you have not already, please place your question in the chat. I will call your name in the order in which the the questions were written into the chat. Um, please remember, this is a public hearing, so please be ready to be on camera. You'll have to accept that option when it's given to you, and then also accept unmuting so that you can ask your question. Um, so we'll go to the first person who, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, and please correct me uh when you, when you're unmuted, um, and say your name. Uh, so our first person is Ernest Russell. I will ask you to start your video and ask you to unmute. And then you can go ahead, please. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my question was uh specific to the, I actually had two questions, but I'll ask the first one, which was, um, are the records being studied and reviewed here specific to persons enslaved in the United States? Um, I only ask because I've heard in other task force meetings that there was involvement in the slave, uh, New York was involved in the slave trade in the West Indies. And so I'm just trying to get clarity to see if Nezrem's records are specific to enslavement in the United uh United States, specifically in New York, New York from inception to emancipation?
Um, that's our primary focus, but we do have um a a field for a related other state or nation. And so when we encounter a record where there is a another uh nation um involved, we then code that so that you can actually, you know, you can sort on that and produce a list of of people that we know about based on records in the United States who are referenced as being, say, they come from a particular country, or they um, they um, um, they were um sold. Some of them punishment involved removing you to a foreign place. Um, they would send you to the sugar plantations if you didn't behave. And so we have that too.
Well, I appreciate that. I'll say the last question was, has there been any efforts today to connect those persons that you found in your records with the actual descendants that are alive throughout the United States?
We're always trying, I can tell you what
Sorry, Dr. Benton, you've got muted some, hang on one second, we're going to get you back.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted.
Yes, uh, sorry.
Okay, great, um. Um, what, what, what? What we are trying to, we want to connect to to the the contemporary people. We absolutely want to do that. And it's a particular challenge in the Northeast states because our enslavement took place so much earlier than in the Southern states and ended earlier. So it's a bigger challenge. I mean, if you have someone in a Southern state who was enslaved in eighteen sixty-five, you then are maybe, you know, if you can, you can get back to, the person might still be alive in nineteen ten. And, you know, you can kind of make these kinds of connections, but but ours are more difficult. What we're doing is, um, we're starting a process, particularly for the people who are have birth registration records. If I have someone named Francis, who was registered under the gradual emancipation law um in in eighteen ten as being born to to a mother. So, um, this is a a black woman named Francis born in eighteen ten. I could go to the eighteen forty census in and look for a black woman named Francis who is thirty years old. And what I would get is two or three or four possibilities. And in some of the databases, FamilySearch, for example, likes to identify possibles. And so what we want to do is to identify possibles that would get us further up the years. It's like, I feel like I'm standing in eighteen hundred and reaching forward to eighteen eighty or eighteen ninety and trying to show them, here's the record. Um, and so that's what we're doing. We're also sharing all of the names we have and all the information we have with the Ten Million Names Project because that's a national project to try and and facilitate um, the um, the um, the the making the family trees complete. And so those are the two things that we're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Benton. Um, I see we have, the next person with a question is Nia Chloé. Again, please correct me if I have said your name incorrectly.
Hi, good morning, my name is Nia Chloé. Thank you, doctor, for this um presentation. I actually went to your last, to the last public hearing, so I got to hear a bit of this prior. You partly answered some of my question, which was, how can Black New Yorkers find value in this, where you were specifying that this can be used for research-based um projects for students? But I would love to know just some brainstorming thoughts on how folks who aren't students or who aren't studying can also find value in this index.
Okay, well, I mean, I as as a, I'm I'm not a historian in my academic, but in my in my activities as a historian, I think history is very important and that it has intrinsic value and that you don't know what the value is if you don't first figure out what the history is. And so, um, so it's hard for me to say that there's gold at the end of the rainbow. Um, but I believe there is. Um, I I think the 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 value to people who live now is, first of all, completing the the history of a time in New York that actually explains a lot of what's going on now. Um, but you have to understand it from then. Um, I also think that um there is that that there is value in this generation, reaching back to that generation and respecting them. That that doesn't, you know, provide us, we don't get money for it, we don't get, you know, it's a, but but there is, I think it's morally valuable for this generation of New Yorkers to reach back and name the children who were taken from their mothers. Name the people who, you know, uh, n- name the the enslaved people um because we owe it to them. Um, now, whether, um, I I I have ideas about reparations. Um, and I I think that one of the, one of the contributions that Nezrem can make to an analysis of reparations is to is to create an index of of enslavement intensity by town across the state. Um, because, you know, there were places where there was no enslavement. And so I don't want to punish them because there wasn't any enslavement, but there are no, you know, it's not, you know, I think we need to 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 focus on where the enslavement was and then look at how that enslavement, now, you might have had enslavement in Brooklyn that had an effect in Albany. But um, but but it seems to me, we need to understand where the enslavement was taking place most intensely because that would be where I think we should focus some of our reparational understandings. I I think, for example, I I'm I'm at some point going to present this at a different time. I think that if you look at the slavery-intensive localities in New York, you will find greater patterns of contemporary discrimination now, which which to me justifies reparations now because of something that happened in the past. I think, for example, that that um, that, and I'm a professor, but I I can show you that co- state colleges, state state um, the senior colleges, it's a category of colleges that that provide baccalaureate and master's degrees. Um, the ones that are in slavery-intensive areas happen to have fewer professors per thousand students than the ones that aren't. Now, you can have a variety of explanations. Well, I mean, you can say it's SUNY or CUNY, but it's it it's true in SUNY, and it's true in CUNY, and it's really true if you put it together. But it seems to me that th- this is something that that, a a method that we can, we can look at the places that that had the most enslavement, the most intense, and then look at whether it's, um, whether there is more intense racial discrimination and racism, et cetera, going on and other kinds of harms now. And so, once again, I come back to what I said at the beginning, that doing the project that we're doing about documenting the history of 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 enslavement and getting down to the names and getting down to the locations is is fundamental to the reparations exercise.
Thank you, Dr. Benton.
Thank you for a wonderful question. In fact, thank you both for the wonderful questions.
Yeah, they were really great questions. Um, I did want to acknowledge that Senator Sanders is here. Um, Senator, did you want to say hello to folks? Um, if you do, you have been offered the option to unmute and come on camera? Um, if you do, you have been offered the option to unmute and come on camera.
Can you hear me?
We can see and hear you.
Oh, my. Uh, it's a very interesting conversation, uh, that has been held and I've been enjoying it. Um, one of the things that you will have to do, uh, Dr. Benton, with your, um, as you work your analysis. Is you have to work on the issue of sundown towns that the enslaved may indeed have been in a place for a long time. And it, uh, built them and did some incredible things, but then will run out of that town. So you. Have them into town. Uh, so a preliminary look will say, wait, there's no slavery here. Or it will also take in, ta- take into account that there were work gangs there. And they may have been brought, like, for example, to the town of Lackawanna, New York. Uh, where gangs were brought to work on the canal and other things. Um, these were not listed in Lackawanna. They were not from there, but they were from there and, um. And may have tried to stay and were driven out. Lackawanna, uh, of course, is, uh, alleged. To have been a sundown town, um, one of the sundown towns in New York State. Um. Sorry, my phone, uh, somebody tried to call and, um. Let me just tell them I'll speak to them later. So, under those conditions, um. I think that the questions are fantastic and we are, as we, as we are making a journey. Towards the truth and, and part of the truth, of course, is reparations. Um. And I will stop for a moment and see if there's any questions that anyone has for me while I'm here. All right, if that's the case, then I will, uh, go to the background and continue to listen and learn.
Okay, well, I. I, I, I could say a couple of things based upon what you've said. It's very interesting. One about, about sundown. If you look at the records of the people who fought on the side of the Brits, escaped from enslavement and fought on the side of the Brits and then got to go to Nova Scotia. Um, two of them were from Mamaroneck, a town where I used to live. Um, and, but. What we learned about them, following up with the Nova Scotian Black Loyalist Societies. Is that many of them went up and formed a wonderful community in Nova Scotia that was near the ocean and they did fishing and they did farming and they. And it was a vibrant community, so vibrant. That someone decided to burn it down. And so, once the community was burned down, they said, well, we've got to relocate you and they sent them off into the woods. A very rocky wooded area without access to fishing. So the big, where they, the way they were eating was gone. And then they said, but we'll, we're, this is a good community here. We'll, we'll redevelop it. And it was redeveloped for, for, um, for the, um, for the white people. And so that's, that, we certainly have, have examples of that. I also saw someone ask about. Uh, ask in the chat about the potential for reparations to be punishment for some people and I. I don't, I don't know. I, I think that, um, in my example that I gave about universities. If what we did was to take the universities. That have, say, the lower ratios of faculty to students. And raise it to a, to a higher average. This would benefit the students in those campuses, which are the more minority-serving campuses. It would not only serve black students, it would serve Hispanic students, it would serve Asian students. But no one would lose anything. Um, what we would do is to correct something which is basically wrong anyway. There's no reason for people paying the same tuition. To get less of a access to a faculty member at one place than at another. Um, but so I think we can find reparations that are, are not like win-lose. Um, they, they can, they can be beneficial broadly.
Thank you, Dr. Benton. Um, I see that person, uh, Judy Smith, I'm going to find you in the chat and give you the. Offer the request to come on, on camera and unmute in case you wanted to clarify your question.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can see and hear you. Thank you.
Right. Oh, well, the reason why I asked because he did say, he said, um. That we shouldn't, everyone shouldn't be punished. Um, by reparations. So I just wanted clarity on that because we've heard. Um. Wait, hold on. We've heard a lot of. Opposition to it. And. Some of the opposition was, well, my family wasn't. Enslavers, um, why should I pay? Um, taxes when I didn't have anything to do with this? So that's, that's the reason why I asked.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a, a good question. Um, and I think it's a question that really goes at to the heart of the commission's function in formulating. Good reparations. Um, and that's a factor to consider, but I, I thought I gave an example of a reparation which. Would be good public policy and wouldn't necessarily, um, punish anybody. It, it wouldn't take something away from anybody. It would simply correct an injustice. For, for some and, and, um. But, but that's an example, and I'm sure that the commission is going to be sorting through thousands of ideas.
Okay, thank you.
That is probably true about having lots of questions, um, or recommendations to sort through. Um. I think Portia Brown, your hand is raised. Did you have a question that you wanted to ask? Um, we can. Make sure you're on video and. Have you unmute if you wanted to ask your question?
You unmute. You have to.
Okay, I just got the opportunity to unmute. So, thank you. Um, my name is Portia Edwards Brown. I am from the Detroit Grassroots Coalition. I'm very active in what's, um, happening with reparations here in Detroit and very interested with what's happening in New York as well. So. I appreciate the presentation today. Um, I'm, I'm coming up following James Sanders' comment as well as Judy Smith's comment. Um, with regards to specificity, with regards to opposition. Um, New York, just like Detroit, but I think more so New York is heavily populated with immigrants. People of immigrant backgrounds, and it's these very people who, um, don't know our history, could care less for it. Who come from their third world countries and are given reparations up top, from the top, whether it's called reparations or not. But all of these concessions are made for people who are not of this soil and from this country and have been enslaved through US chattel slavery. So to James Sanders, because I kind of follow some of his work, um, but he speaks very vocal. On immigrant issues in New York and what's happening with ICE. And I just tend to see a little bit of a conflict of interest. Um, with his voice being in the room, um, because I don't see it anywhere else. Um, so I'd say I just take concern with that. Just to back up Judy's, uh, um, response to. Um, the opposition is that it's everyone who's not a black American. Who would, who would essentially kind of be opposed to, uh, what's owed, uh, to black Americans. And this is due to stolen labor, wages. Um, I'm sure housing discrimination and things of the like. Um, black Americans in New York, and then I'll close here.
I'm sorry, no, why, well, we don't want this to be your, your testimony. Um, can you? Is your question for Senator Sanders or for Dr. Benton?
I've got an answer.
Oh, okay.
But I bet Senator Sanders does too.
Okay, so I'm gonna, uh, Dr. Benton, why don't you, um, have the last word? And Senator Sanders, I think, uh, Ms. Brown was indicating the question was directed to you.
Now, I'm at a disadvantage. I walked away for a hot second. Um, if, if he could do it in ten seconds, I'd be glad to answer. I caught some of it, but I don't want to misspeak.
Hang on one second. She has to get, uh, the. Unmute back.
Um, so real short, just backing up Judy's, uh, question, Judy Smith. You show a lot of support for immigrants, uh, uh, those with immigrant backgrounds there in New York. I just see a conflict of interest with your voice in the room. And so that's, that's all I wanted to add to the conversation. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Of course, of course. Um. Where do you even start? Um, I would encourage. One of the things that, that we should do with one another is to hear from them and not from people who speak about them. You may want to study my history a little bit more because I, I think that you're being ill-informed. Um, I absolutely respect immigrants, wherever they come from. Uh, and as a matter of fact, I, I think that the, the conversation started with me. Um. Uh, in a, I was being a sarcastic argument that I raised where I said that. My family was an immigrant too. Um, and we, and in that sense, we were. My family, my mother's from Alabama, my father's from South Carolina. We were, uh, we fled the South. And we fled from terror and terrorists in the South. I think that that's a historical statement, especially for my family. And, uh, that is the origin of a misunderstanding that you may have. Uh, but in terms of reparations themselves, um. As the author of the Reparations Bill of New York State. Uh, i- it's a longer conversation. I'm willing to have it offline. You, it may be better to have it offline and I open myself up. For you to have, uh, as many questions as you wish. You have a, you absolutely have a right to, um. To raise and to, to question. My work number. My work number is a seven-one-eight number. Five-two-three-three-oh-six-nine. Five-two-three-three-oh-six-nine. Um. Sister Brown, I look forward to any conversation. Seven-one-eight-five-two-three-three-oh-six-nine. And that way we can get back to the conversation at hand. Uh, Dr. Benton, of course, wanted to speak on this.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, I would just make one observation. I did some, I, I was involved some at, at a point with Harvard University's. Legacy of, uh, reparat- uh, of slavery project. And one of the concepts that they used in one of their reparations initiatives was the concept of a descendant community. In other words, you take a place. It might be a geographical place or it might be a, uh, um, a, uh, uh. Anyway, you take a place. And, um, in tracing back the history of enslavement in that place. And then in evaluating the place today, you can see that there are certain problems that continue to exist in the place. Because of its history and times of enslavement and be, and, and, uh, and, um. Um, you, you know, that there, that, uh, therefore a reparation might take place in that community. Even though the people in the community weren't the ones who were enslaved, but they're living in a community. That, um, you know, perhaps the community may have been, you know, a kind of a disrespected community in the past because of, of, of enslavement. And then it becomes a toxic waste area. And then now it's poisoning some people in the, in the, in the, and, and. And so there's a need for a reparation and it would benefit the people who are living there now, but they're not the people who originally lived there. But it is a, a, a form of reparation. Um, it's, it's all complicated though, but I, I think that there are reparations that are. Are good public policy for everybody anyway. And that, that, uh, then also have a, a, as, as a feature, have a reparative. Uh, uh, benefit as well.
Thank you, Dr. Benton. Um, just to let everyone know, we have one more question that is specifically for, uh. Senator Sanders and then after that, we will take a break and come back so that we have ample time for public testimony. The question is from, uh, Ms. Nia Chloé Bowman. Thank you for that correction. I think you have the unmute.
Yes, thank you. Hi, Senator Sanders. Thank you for joining today. My question is more about what is the logistical process after the. Commission hands over their report, such as, does the recommendations have to be voted upon, both, both parts of the state Congress? What happens if Kathy Hochul doesn't get reelected? What does the commission look like as well as the recommendations? And also what happens if some recommendations are agreed upon and not others?
Worthy questions all. I, I trust you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, always scared with these Zooms that, that you're not hearing me. Uh, worthy questions all. Um, you named, you, you, you're well-versed in it. You named the process that, that will happen. So. Uh, within a reasonable amount of time, the reparations commission will hand in its judgments, its findings. And these will be reviewed by, uh, both, both, uh, uh. Campuses, if you wish, the Assembly and the Senate. They, those groups will get together and they will debate and decide. They will decide which. Uh, bills, if any. They have three choices. They can accept everything in full. They can reject everything. They can accept, they can do some, some middle ground. Uh, just knowing people as I know people, I suspect the middle ground will be, um, will be done. Um. And then that will go before, th- this is just the logistics. Then that goes before the governor to. For her approval, disapproval, her disapproval. Uh, she may try to negotiate. She may say, I like A, B, and C, but not D. Or E or whatever. Um, after that dance, if you wish, is over. She will have, and, and if it, if it has been modified, she will have a chance to approve or disprove and, and her disapproval is called a veto. She can veto and say, I don't want any of this. She can say that. She, or whoever the governor is, I'll call it, she. Um, then the body itself, the, uh, legislature can override her veto. Can have a majority, uh, to override her veto, assuming that there is a majority. And, and still enact it as law. You really try not to enact it that way. Because you could find yourself in a situation where. She, uh, I'm, I'm using she as, as the governor can, um, sabotage your stuff. Suppose she doesn't fund it at the level that it should be. Uh, where thing needs, I don't know, a thousand dollars and she says, give them ten dollars. Uh, you, you know, you really want as much of an agreement as possible. Now, let me get rid of that process and speak of. The internal process, the real quote-unquote process. All of this depends on a question of power. Power. And the stronger you are, the more you're likely to see justice. The weaker you are, the less likely you are to see justice. Um, and that's just an American way. Um, and that's just in American way. So, we should be building for that type of power now. And how do you do this, and how do I do this? You do this by getting in touch with your legislatures and keeping them, um, up to date and keeping them in the loop and make sure that they are uh, in agree, in agreement, a, a, bu- a vast agreement right now, not a specific one. Uh, but you're trying to keep them in the loop and, and engage while we head towards this. What, what I am doing is I'm having those very conversations that I just spoke of with the different legislators. But I'm also taking, uh, I'm about to go this, this month, later this month. I will be on a, a tour, a tour of the North of New York. I will hit five different cities. And while I'm there, I'm going to meet with community groups over the issue of reparations. As all of us should, we should be having conversations in our families. We should be having conversations with our neighbors. We should be having conversations with our churches, synagogues, temples, wherever we find ourselves. We should be having conversations with anyone who does not move fast enough, uh, on this issue. Uh, and if you need to be connected to anyone, you should get in touch with my office. We're working hard to make sure that if you're in, uh, I don't know, Watertown, New York, we can tell you who is near or around your area, et cetera. We also need you to be getting these stories that the doctor, uh, had. I bumped into a journalist who's trying to find people whose families were here before eighteen twenty-three. And we need to have these, uh, stories that we can help put out. I'm hoping that Dr. Benton, I can speak to him later, perhaps he would be able to, um, give these journalists some people who were here before eighteen twenty-three, or families actually. And, um, we can keep these things alive in the larger media. Um, I hope that I answered your question. I probably over answered it. But, um, but I, I hope that it's, you found this sufficient.
Thank you, Senator Sanders. Um, and thank you to Dr. Benton, um, for generating such a, a rich conversation so far. Uh, Senator Sanders, you'll be here still after the public testimony? Great.
Yeah.
You'll get to hear some of the stories that people will share. Um, so, uh, let's take a bio break, everyone. Um, we are going to come back in five minutes. We want to make sure that we have time for public testimony. We've gone a bit over, um, what was intended. Um, so I want to make sure that we have time for public testimony. So this will be a five-minute break. Um, if you have not signed up to provide public testimony and you want to, please make sure that you message, um, Operations Manager Ro Owen during this bio break. Let's be back at twelve nineteen PM Eastern. If you're somewhere else, you're gonna have to do that math, wherever you are. Thank you, everyone. Welcome back, everyone. Hopefully that let everyone know that we're, we're back on. Okay. So in a moment, we will begin the public testimony portion of our hearing. This is an opportunity for New Yorkers to share their experiences, their perspectives and recommendations, especially on this month's theme of displacement and removal of and land wealth theft from black New Yorkers. Each speaker will have three minutes. Everyone should please extend to each speaker the same respect they expect to receive. This includes respecting the allotted time to speak. When you see that your three minutes have elapsed, you should hear the closing music. You can also see the time counting down in the top right of the Zoom window. Excuse me. You should please finish your testimony, if you haven't already, to respect everyone else's time to share. We will mute speakers who go over their allotted time. If your testimony is longer than three minutes, please feel welcome to submit the written testimony online or leave a voicemail. Please listen for your name and be ready to be on camera and unmuted. Um, so Operations Manager Ro Owen has put the, the first three speakers in the chat, so I will call your name and look for you on the participant list. If you are there, then you'll be offered the opportunity to come on camera and unmute. If we call your name, but you are not present, we'll move on to the next speaker. If there is time after everyone else has shared their testimony, we'll circle back to anyone who stepped away, but indicated that they wanted to publicly share testimony. Okay, so we'll start off. Um, just first, I'm gonna call out the name so that you can hear your name, if you aren't able to see the chat for any reason. Ernest Russell will be our first public testimony. Uh, Kathy Dean will be second. And then, correct me if I'm saying your name incorrectly, I apologize, Brooklene will be the third. Please remember when you testify to say your name and then begin speaking, uh, and sharing. Um, so we will go to Ernest Russell first. I see that you already have your camera on. I will offer you the opportunity to, uh, unmute, and then your timer will begin once you start speaking.
All right, can you guys hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Okay, so my name is Ernest Russell, and my comments today are based on the six eleven meeting, as well as some of the, the comments made today. Um, I do want to say that, you know, congratulate the New York Task Force on getting the eighteen-month extension. But I do want to urge them that they should focus on engaging the descendant community within the state of New York. Just so that we can actually begin the work of coming up with solutions for years of unpaid labor and stolen futures in that state. Um, with that in mind, I would like to ask that the task force implements a Zoom-like session during those public hearings where we have more speakers, so that I and others have the chance to participate actively when it comes to those live in-person hearings where you have nine members of the task force present. Um, when you deny us live participation, you kind of limit our voices in a, in a sense. And you restrict our power to speak in truth in real time. And for the descendants of enslaved persons whose voices have been denied for centuries, silence is just not an option. Um, I do want to also state that we generally do not agree with these attempts to broaden reparations into a general race-based program for all people of African descent. And I say that for legal reasons, moral reasons, as well as reasons specific to this presentation to, to date. And so as you see with the speaker who went over this history of enslavement in the state of New York, and he spoke to the records that are specific to New York, the stories and lives of those families are specific to individuals here in the United States. And nowhere to date have I seen the state of New York show us actual examples of impacts to other communities, whether they are Caribbean or African, in the context of this reparations conversation. And so if you're solely going to use the history of persons who were enslaved in the United States to make an argument for all black people, I would like to see where is the justification in that, considering that others were not harmed by this specific, uh, state or by this specific nation. And so, uh, with that being said, I would like to state that we demand, as a descendant of a person who was enslaved in the United States and, uh, potentially related to folks in New York, I will state that, uh, we demand more than symbolic justice. We demand more than studies and summaries. We do demand full redress. And I know that Senator Sanders said that there will be room for compromise in the legislative session. But let's be clear that any compromise that does not result in direct benefits to this harmed community is not reparations. While it could be symbolic in nature, and it looks good, and it may look pretty, it is not true justice. And until we get to that point where we have actual justice, we're not at the point where we're actually serious about reparations. And so, um, I would state that I would like to see legislation coming out of New York that supports an office of what we call Freeman Affairs, which exclusively focuses on the needs of descendants and advances their political, uh, needs in the state. I would also like to see legislation that tracks the outcomes of this group and ensures accountability and measure, uh, measures progress over time. And with that, I will land, because I know I'm at.
Thank you. Okay, so our next speaker is Kathy Dean. I am swirling. You are already on camera. Your time is yours.
Oh, okay. My name is Kathy Dean. And I am a Global War on Terrorism Disabled Veteran. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Solutions for addressing record loss and recognition for Hill Cherry Senior and Hill Cherry Junior, alias Hill Gillum, my direct present-day New York State ancestors. My great-great-great-grandfather Hill Cherry Senior served honorably in the Union Army during the Civil War in the Fourteenth Regiment, United States Colored Heavy Artillery. His military record obtained through the National Archives and Records Administration shows his service was officially credited to the town of Henderson, Jefferson County, New York. Yet no local or state record acknowledges the bounty owed to him. My great-great-grandfather Hill Cherry Junior, alias Hill Gillum, also served in the same regiment. Federal records confirm that his service was credited to Casanova-Dash-Hamilton in Madison County, New York. He received one hundred dollars for clothing with three hundred dollars still due. A state record supports this credit, but there is no evidence the full bounty was ever paid. This is just not a personal story. It is a pattern. Professor Ned Benton testified to the disappearance of records related to enslavement in New York, citing a law that prohibits destruction of historical slave, slavery records. These omissions deny families like mine the reparations we are owed. Proposed actions for the commission. One, provide direct cash payments to all present-day direct descendants of emancipated United States Civil War soldiers for the unpaid bounty adjusted for inflation. Two, acknowledge and provide redress for the complete denial of bounty to Hill Cherry Senior and Hill Cherry Junior, alias Hill Gillum, despite their verified service. Three, recognize that New York State benefited from enlistment credits while failing to compensate emancipated American soldiers of the Civil War. Four, issue a formal apology and place historical markers in Casanova-Dash-Hamilton, Madison County, New York, Henderson, the town of Henderson, Jefferson County, New York, and Windsor, the town of Windsor in Bertie County, North Carolina. The moral and historical obligation to correct this erasure is urgent. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy Dean. Uh, next we have Brooklene. Please first accept the invitation to come on camera. Great. And then you should see an invitation to unmute. Okay. Brooke, we still can't hear you for some reason. I think it's, on your end, you're unmuted for us. Um, are your inputs? I'm not a tech person, so I'm not sure if I'm saying this right, but are your inputs connected? Hmm, the mic needs to be coming from your computer, I think, unless you have your headphones plugged in, perhaps. That might be. Okay, um, we're gonna circle back to you, Brooke, um, while you figure that out. Um, we'll go to, the next person is Net Johns, so I will find you on the list. Here you are. So please accept the invitation to come on camera.
Good afternoon. Can I be heard?
Yes, perfect.
Thank you so much. I wanted to speak to the idea of those that are Black American whose families migrated from the South up to the North and eligibility requirements for those for the state of New York. I'd just like to say that, you know, this history lesson is personal for me. My ancestors were enslaved down in Alabama. Their names will never appear in textbooks or on plaques, but their stolen labor helped build this country and that legacy didn't just stay in the South. It reached all the way up here to New York State. We often think of New York as a land of opportunity or a free state, but it was deeply entangled in the system of slavery and not just in theory. Slavery in Alabama fueled, you know, the real wealth, real businesses right here in New York City and the state of New York. A lot of this came through cotton. Alabama produced massive amounts of cotton. Thanks to my enslaved people like my family, cotton became America's most valuable export. The state of New York was at the center of that of that trade. The cotton my ancestors picked piled with factories, filled ships and built fortunes on Wall Street. Banks held loan money to plantation owners using human beings, human beings like my ancestors as collateral. Major financial institutions, even names like JP Morgan Chase, Citibank and Lehman Brothers profited directly from the system of enslavement. So no, New York didn't need to own slaves, which it did to benefit from slavery. It just needed to profit from it and it did over and over again. This is an ancient history. It's the foundation of our economy and our institution and it's part of my family's story. When my family moved here in the nineteen fifty's, they weren't newcomers to this economy. We built this economy. They came to reclaim an opportunity they helped create, not as immigrants from another country, but as people with a vested stake in this very foundation of this nation. Their story and the story of countless others like them deserves to be part of this narrative. We deserve to be paid. We deserve to repay for it because the price that they pay is still visible all around us. And with that, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Sage M. And I actually forgot, I'm sorry, I should have said the next few speakers, so Net Johns was the next one who just we just heard from Sage M., you're next, and then Mia Chloé Bowman, you'll be the sixth person called upon. Sage, please stand by. You are already on camera, so please accept the unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can see and hear you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you again for holding this this meeting with us. I don't need three minutes. Black Americans have always been the victims of any type of injustice in this country. So we need to be compensated for that. We built this nation from ground up. No one was compensated from that. My ancestors come from South Carolina as well as Louisiana. Reparations has to be paid exactly how it was paid to everyone else in the world. It cannot be symbolic. It cannot be a holiday. It cannot be South Africa's acknowledging and saying you're sorry. It would have to be cash payments. It would have to be direct to the descendants of the people that are alive today. When you purchase a property, you inherit that property's debts and that property's problems. So for anyone that is of any type of immigrant background, I says that they're not entitled to pay reparations. Once they move to America, you inherit America's debt. I'm sorry to say, but that's the way it is. Again, I want to reiterate reparations has to be cash payments. It cannot be symbolic. It would have to be for cash payments and anti-black hate crime bill, free schooling and possibly even a non-tax. We should be non-tax citizens for building of this nation. With that, I'm land. Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you, Sage. Our next speaker is Mia Chloé Bowman. You're already, I think, on camera. Please accept the invitation to unmute.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mia Chloé Bowman. I have a few, I have four points that I want to get through today. So just to talk about the cash payments direct to the descendants, I think a actionable proposal for this is incorporating some sort of black tax to the corporations that are still existing today that have benefited from the wealth of Black enslaved who were pretty much a down payment either from insurance industries to financial industries for those that were denying mortgages to Black and Brown people that caused the redlining to the fashion companies that were using the cotton pick from the South to then be shipped to the North to create the industrial fashion capital that we have today. So we have some sort of shared tax system that's either coming from state funding as well as from corporate corporations, funding and profits. That will also be something that has to be considered so that we are settling the fact that there does need to be some sort of direct compensation given to those who have descendancy. Also, I said this in the last public hearing, but mandating New York State history should be a part of the proposals as well, considering that this history has not been taught properly so that there needs to be a redress across all New Yorkers so that it's very much understanding how much of New York played a role when it came to funding its founding its state, considering that we are in the four hundred years of the making of New York State today. Second, thirdly, is making reparations periodic. We have been hearing this conversation between whether it should be race-based or lineage-based, and I want us to move forward in a way that we are meeting in the middle. So I'm thinking forward to the things that Senator Sanders has already made clear what they'll have to litigate on and or at least have to legislate on in the post of handing in the report. So with that in mind, making reparations based periodic, we understand that reparations is starting from slavery, but it is not just slavery in the end-all be-all. It has its cousins with Jim Crow South, with de facto segregation, with separate but equal, but also now we are seeing the repercussions of gentrification being compounded from what started with that down payment of slavery. So making sure that we are having periodic proposals to address those different types of periods. Oh, and I forgot mass incarceration as well and the war on drugs. These different periods are all stemming from the father of slavery. So there needs to be correct proposals to address those different periods because those did impact different types of Black people during that time, which also leads me to a sub-point of making sure that we are not just considering Black Americans when we just want to look at it from a slavery perspective, we are considering the Caribbean's and Africans who are also going to be impacted from its cousins thereon after. And my fourth point is making sure that there is some sort of specific agenda for Black New Yorkers who have been displaced by gentrification because of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back to Brooklyn. Hopefully, your sound is sorted. I'm looking for you in the, there you are. Please accept the invitation to unmute. Awesome.
Okay.
Yes, we can hear you. All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Again, reparations are unpaid wages for the labor our ancestors gave to build this country, labor that was never compensated for. If your family didn't work for free on this land and they didn't help build the United States like any other class action lawsuit, you don't qualify. Eligibility can be shown through the census records like the eighteen seventy census. It is interesting that Senator Sanders wants to trace families back before eighteen twenty-three. That includes every foundational Black American, every freedman. That is roughly about forty-four billion of us, but he is not talking about immigrants. Let's be clear. I am not an immigrant and I did not come here by by choice. And some of us are indigenous to this land. We were trafficked here and neither of those fit the definition of an immigrant. If you look up the definition of immigrant, it reads a person that comes to a new country to live permanently. So Senator Sanders, where are your people from? Today's speaker touched on painful truths on the indigenous enslavement on babies being torn from their mothers, made into orphans. He spoke on illegal slavery and how two-thirds of the New York senators once owned slaves. Enslavement was taught at institutions like Yale, how to enslave was taught at institutions like Yale. He wants to look for us to look closely at where enslavement happened and to whom. Again, that does not include immigrants. To the Black diaspora, I have a question. This didn't happen to your ancestors. How can you sit here and feel justified by asking for compensation? You sit here and hear these atrocities that happened to our ancestors and you just want to hop on board. How can you do that? How can you live with yourself? I just wanted to say, Ms. Bowman, you asked a question earlier. What will happen with this bill? It's going in the trash because it's unconstitutional and Senator Sanders knows it. And he told us he wrote it. So he knows that the bill is unconstitutional, so it's going in the trash, okay? So that's what's going to happen to it. Please, everyone, please go to bit.ly/reparations with an S-N-Y-S. Join our email letter writing campaign so we can get an actual bill that is constitutionally sound. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you to all of our public testimony speakers. Seeing no one else in the list to offer public testimony, we will close out this public hearing. So I just want to thank first Senator Sanders for joining today and especially for answering the question about the process. I think it's important for folks to understand that the report, which is due in January twenty twenty-seven, will have a host of recommendations. Some will be about financial payment probably and some will probably be about policies and not all things apply to all people. And as Senator Sanders has explained, not each, every recommendation doesn't necessarily have to be. The legislature may or may not take up, so it may be a whole block. It may be each individual one gets determined and voted up or down, if at all. I want to remind folks that the chat is not being saved, so if you have any public testimony to share, you can please email reparationscommission@reparations.ny.gov. A big thank you to our ASL interpreters who have improved the accessibility of today's hearing. And a big shout out to Dr. Benton. Thank you very much for sharing a really important resource to the community, but also to the commission. And thank you to community members who have not testified before, especially for coming out and making time to share. It is important for the commission to hear a variety, a diversity of not just perspectives, but also stories, oral histories. And if you have, again, anything that you would like to share that's longer than three minutes, please feel welcome to email. And you can also call and leave a voicemail if writing is not your forte, let's say. For we really appreciate the insights, experiences and recommendations that were shared today because they will inform the commission's ongoing work and final recommendations. So that is really important. Again, I just want to emphasize for those that are interested in following the commission's progress or providing additional input, I've shared the website. Our next in-person hearing will be on the thirty-first of July. The commission will hold the this hearing at the Brooklyn Public Library in at the Brooklyn Heights location. You can visit NY.gov backslash reparations for more information, more details. Please keep checking the website for logistics. We hope to see you there. Thank you again for your participation and your commitment to this important work of healing and moving us towards communal abundance. This hearing is now adjourned. Thank you.